Or by statute. Court support criminal, this is where we created the roving bailiff this year. Also with the increase is DPS live services and increases to professional services. These last, this last month, we had to do a budget amendment. And so I'm reviewing what was spent in the past as well as has been spent this year to see if we need to adjust the cornerling, and it did. Court support civil, it was an increase to two hundred forty thousand dollars, two hundred thirty thousand dollars. This is because of contract placement for post adjudication as well as prior budget amendments. And so we're trying to budget them accordingly. The rest of the court support CPS for each district judge did not change. Besides four seventy second, since it was a new court created, we're needing to budget for them, one hundred fifty thousand dollars. Court support for child support enforcement, we needed to increase that by five thousand due to past experience. And this is also as well as four seventy second being created. Guardianship, the M I, the contract that we use for guardianship, court approved an increase to the contract. And so we need to make sure it's increased this next year to cover the contract that was approved. Court support probate decreased due to past years' experiences, we're going to leave five hundred dollars just in case. I'll turn to dispute resolution, same as last year, fifty thousand dollars. Collections, it was an increase by ninety nine thousand, this is because we created the clerk one. As well as the equipment that's needed for this position, furniture, scanner, computer, that kind of thing. As well as their, we moved their eye plow subscription, which is IT related item from IT to collections, so they can handle that bill. County attorney increased by one hundred fifty two thousand dollars, which is basically salary benefits for the COLA. District attorney increased based on three, three hundred forty five thousand, this is for the VACA or victim assistance coordinator. As well as small increases for supplies and other charges. Child protective services increased by fifteen thousand, as you can see contingency was moved from supplies to contingency, so that's where that negative came from. District clerk, forty, increased by forty three thousand, this is due to salary benefits. Same thing with jury services, one hundred seventy five thousand. If you do notice, we reallocated some funding that was never used in the past from contract services. And moved it to mailing due to four seventy second being created, they need additional postage and mailing or shipping. For jury summons that needed to go out, and so we rearranged some of their funding, as well as we needed to add some because of the postage. County clerk increased by sixty, majority of it salary benefits. Vital statistics, no increase. A fifth district court increased by nineteen thousand, and you see some of, there's a few negatives because we did review the budget and see where we can decrease. Due to funding not being expensed in the past, as well two seventy second, increased twenty one thousand. Three sixty first, twenty four thousand, and there is a bailiff salary adjustment for this division. Four seventy second, the big increase is three hundred eighty thousand dollars, it's because this past year, the only thing that was budgeted was for the judge at eighteen thousand dollars. The positions were created, and so that's where you see this eighty nine thousand for the medical, as well as flex being created. But we had to fully fund this division this next year. As well as operational cost. Felony associate judge, juvenile court referee, you're going to see a big jump here, this is where we're moving Judge Swan, she was split fifty fifty between family law. And, and felony court and juvenile, and so we're going to push her all into one court as a budget allocation. And we're just going to not split her salary between the two departments anymore. Mr. Meter Associate Court, the only increase is due to salary benefits at hundred sixteen, at sixteen thousand dollars. County specialty court program increased by thirty four thousand dollars, this is due to salary benefits. Family law associate court administration, and this is where the decrease, because we moved Judge Swan from this division, her fifty percent to juvenile. As well as there was a salary adjustment for the court reporter and bailiff, but it was still a savings of fifty nine thousand dollars. County court at law one, it was an increase of one hundred twenty four thousand dollars, this is the creation of the probate guardianship investigator that would be shared between county court at law one and two. But the position is going to solely live in, in the court one. County court law two, the only increase is by ten thousand dollars, you can see there's a big decrease by seventy thousand dollars. The contract that they use for court reporter has went away, as this last year, the court approved for a court reporter to be created under county court at law two. So this will, the position took, took place of this contract, so this next year it will go away. Just as at the piece one administration, an increase by seventeen thousand dollars due to salary benefits. Just as at the piece two, same thing, increased by seventeen thousand. Precinct three, an increase of twenty four thousand. For precinct four, we created a clerk three with the increase of one hundred four thousand dollars total. Community supervision support, it was a decrease of thirty five thousand dollars, the reason is because this year, court approved HVAC project. That is for C S C D building, but it has not yet been completed. Until we have a contract in hand to update it, then we will move the money accordingly, since it has been on the rolls for several years. Public defender's office, this is where the position for the juvenile attorney was created, but only benefits were there this last year. This next year, they would like to reclassify that position as a receptionist and fully fund it as a need, which will increase by forty seven thousand. Keep in mind that majority of all the positions besides this one is under the grant. Court facility administration is a decrease of forty two thousand dollars, this last year, we purchased a new metal detector at the courthouse security rebuild, and so this project has went away. Law enforcement for the sheriff's office, an increase of nine hundred fifty eight thousand dollars. You can see we created a recruiting specialist as well as administrative support position. We also made the are you okay to the sheriff's office from the are you okay division. As well as the dispatch salary implementation for ranges. I'm trying to read, this also includes some of the one time onlys that we discussed in the one time only sheet. For jail administration, it's an increase of two point five million, this is a creation of. Of the twenty one positions, keep in mind, out of those twenty one positions, only six, excuse me, eleven of them will be funded fully. The remainder will be unfunded, but only benefits will be there. As well as the jail share project will be included. That will be a rollover project.
The unfunded positions will be positions that if they get filled, we will fund them through contingency?
I would keep them unfilled until funding is needed, so if we're still showing a, we're still able to cover based on some of the unfunded, unfunded positions. Then I will leave them unfunded until we really are meeting at least ninety five percent of our salaries. I want to make sure they're able to cover, you know, payroll all the way up to the end of the year. And so that's why we created, we funded the jail position, the sheriff's administration positions by two this next year, because they have been filled. And so I want to make sure we're able to cover payroll, but I will keep them unfilled until we're getting closer to, to, you know, expensing, you know, up to at least ninety five percent for salaries.
Okay, thank you.
Jail medical services, an increase of seventy three thousand dollars, this is for salary benefits. C S I S D school security, it's an increase by fifty seven, I want to keep in mind that this is ILA that is between us and C S I S D. Whatever we expense, they pay back, and so it's one for one.
That's a pass through.
Yes, sir, and so if, if it's one point four budget expenditures, the revenues are the same. Constable precinct one administration increased by thirty three thousand, on the one time only was a best replacement. Constable precinct two, forty five thousand. Constable precinct three, thirty six thousand, of course, best replacement. Constable precinct four, forty eight thousand, and one of the requests was to get a pepper ball gun. A total increase to law enforcement at three point eight. Juvenile services, the total portion of the administration budget, this includes several divisions that consider administration, it's an increase of four hundred eighteen thousand. Within this cost increase is the creation of the lead juvenile supervisor, as well as radio replacement and course salary benefits. Juvenile justice alternative education program, twenty, excuse my, I got hiccups, twenty seven thousand, course salary benefits, and commodities, three thousand. Public transportation, you'll see there is a decrease of six point nine million to this department. One reason is because we removed contingency, they rarely use contingency, and so I decided to put that back into the general fund for other uses. And so that one point two went away. Nine hundred seventy eight thousand dollars for contract services, some of it was one time only projects that were not needed this year, so were completed. As well as I took their base amount for their capital roads back down to ten million dollars. If you look at the past experience, we have not been spending ten million dollars. And so instead of. Budgeting to what they think they can get done, we're going to reevaluate, and so their base budget every year is going to be ten million. And then whatever projects are not completed, as in some of the roads like the Birch Gower, and some of the capital projects we'll roll into next year. And then we'll reevaluate every year if we need to increase their base balance, their base budget for capital.
The repairs and maintenance, there's not a note on that, but that's a pretty good number.
The repairs and maintenance is going to be for your road maintenance, and so whatever increase comes along with that, that they're projects they know they can get done in-house, that's where the amount comes from. And this last year, we did move some money from capital outlay that should have been budgeted in repairs and maintenance, and so that's where the adjustment had came from.
Okay, so adjustment between the capital outlay and the repairs and maintenance.
Yes, sir, so you see where this.
Is the net about five million?
Yes, sir, but some of it has went away, because it was not needed, so if you look at the nine million, it was budgeted at five million. But currently, it's estimated to spend about nine million, and that's because a budget amendment was completed.
The other parts of the contingency that went away.
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Okay. For fleet shop heavy equipment, only increases fifty five thousand dollars, mostly salary benefits, we added an additional ten thousand. As you can see, a budget memo was passed through court today, because they pretty much have expensed all their money, and so we needed to help them out. And of course, the bigger equipment parts cost a lot more than vehicle parts, and this is like the motor graders, dump trucks, that kind of thing. Public health, this is health department support, four thousand dollar increase. The indigent healthcare administration, this is where the eight percent comes from, remember, we stated that was like eight point five, I apologize, it's eight point seven. And so this is where, whatever the tax rate comes from, this is where I need to add. And so, of course, in the fund balance, the county auditor has reserved five million for it, for it. But we have to make sure that we budget eight percent out of the tax rate, or out of the taxes in order to support this. And it could be as less, it could be around three hundred thousand dollars, it just depends on what the tax rate is set, and this is where I will adjust it to. As you can see, we do not spend it, but it's the what ifs, and so if our, if we go over and beyond our eight percent, that's where the county has to pitch in. And so we need to make sure that we have it reserved for indigent. But I can also take it from contingency if it needs to be. Okay? So this will change depending on the tax rate. American Rescue Plan revenue replacement, you can see that money went away, this is the are you okay position that was here, and it went to the sheriff's office. Forensic Services Administration will be created, and so two positions were created for only nine months, it's the Director of Forensics, as well as Administrative Manager. And it's only funded for nine months. Environmental protection only increases ten thousand.
And there's also, also some future potential for ILA to.
It's up to the court if they would like to have something with A and M or.
On the forensic services, okay.
But I can't.
No, you don't budget that, I got it.
Correct, but again, it's only for nine months. Human services, we're almost there, veteran services only increases two thousand dollars. Boomville Heritage Park increases sixty three thousand, this is to cut down all the dead trees, if you haven't driven by Heritage Park, you see all the dead trees, and so we're going to get rid of those. As well as the building repairs to some of the buildings out there. County fire protection, there has not been an increase. County welfare, no increase, it's nine one, it's the EMS for the cities, as well as the precinct part departments, the volunteer part departments.
How long do those contracts go?
They are, believe, by three, oh, I have to ask, three years? And so depending on every year, there might be an increase based on how many trips they make, but I'm not increasing the budget until we get closer to the actuals.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Yeah, that. Did I miss a number or something, but the. Tree removal, I thought that was like twenty three thousand dollars.
It was twenty three, as well as, I think thirty five was for building repairs, so that's where the sixty three comes from.
Thirty five was for what?
I have it. Was for. Tree removal was for.
I thought, yeah, if I remember, that was twenty three thousand, or twenty eight thousand.
And the Boomville repairs was thirty five thousand, and the tree removal service was for, I think, twenty eight.
Twenty eight.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And so that contract has been set, I believe, and so they'll start the tree removal process in October.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Emergency management, increase of forty one thousand dollars, again, most of it was to salary benefits with small increases throughout. Expo Center Administration, it was a decrease of forty thousand dollars, this is due to some of the one time only projects that were budgeted this year have been completed and not needed next year. Fair administration, increased by nine thousand, this is for salary benefits. Plaza Center, increase of three hundred twenty seven thousand, this is due to the two hundred fifty thousand dollars for the parking lot repair. County ag extension, increase of sixty six thousand, this is deleting the part-time position and making it full-time. Child Protective Services, no increase. Family Protection Services, it will be a decrease, as this was an outside agency with Sky's House, we're going back to what the prior years with a small increase. Operating transfers, as you can see on the second page of the handout that I handed you with the capital projects, this is where the transfers come into play. And so we are planning to transfer ten million from the general fund to capital projects. Fifty million for one on one north building. Fifteen million to the medical examiner's office. And the one point one for the TJJD grants with juvenile and the indigent public defender grant. Brings the budget to two hundred sixty six million, eleven thousand, eight hundred seventy one dollars. I would like to go over what is not in the proposed budget. Right now, we're proposing the budget four and a half percent cost of living, but I wanted to give you the numbers, what additional cost of living would be. So if you wanted to do another one and a half percent cost of living, it was going to bring it up to one point two. Merit award was discussed back in June, I'm bringing it back to the table to see what your thoughts are. If we do a one percent merit, it's four hundred, it's five hundred forty thousand dollars. If you do what we did this last year, one and a half, it's additional eight hundred thousand dollars. And right now, this is not in the budget, and so I'd like to sit here and see what your thoughts are regarding the merit. If you would like to move forward and have it in the proposed and adoption.
Well, I've always liked the idea of merit, it gives those elected officials the opportunity to, to. Step above what just the COLA is for employees who may have gone above and beyond what, what the rest of them do. It certainly doesn't give them all a, there's no way you're going to give everybody a merit, but it limits it, but it does give the. Department heads, elected officials, you know, that opportunity, so.
I think the issue, the issue I have with merit is, is merit is credited to departments even for unfilled positions.
Not if the salary is, so.
Okay, but if the salary is funded and it's an unfilled position, merit is also based on that, right?
Correct, on the prior year adopted budget, there's no way for me to go to each position and see if that position was actually filled, my system does not handle that. We would have to rely on HR to give me actuals per position, and I'm not sure that their staff can handle that at the moment.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's, like I said, the only thing that kind of gives me concerns about merit is, is that. We fund merit for funded but unfilled positions.
Correct.
And that goes into a pool.
For that department to use.
For that department to use, and I. I have a little bit of a, of a disagreement with funding merit for people who aren't there.
And there's some exceptions for some departments that we do not use all the positions, say, for instance, I'll use kindergarten court, we don't use the salaries for the whole department. I pick one commissioner, and then, you know, the three staff members to come up with it, and that way it's more, we try to keep it aligned the same throughout the departments.
Right, well, I mean, and I, but I agree with the principle behind merit, I'm not so sure I agree with the funding of. Merit for positions that are funded but not filled.
Correct, and I understand that part, and I do have works restructuring the merit in twenty twenty six. There's just no way for us to get it implemented for twenty twenty five, to where the merit goes to the person and not to the position. And that way it can help the situation, there would be more guidelines, you have to be here a year, you cannot be on administrative leave, you know, that kind of thing, without pay. And so there's, there would be certain guidelines that will have to go about it, but for right now, this is how the, this is easiest way to get the system done.
I understand, well, I mean, and if you just do cost of living adjustments, I've said this before, each, it stretches out the top to the bottom.
Correct.
If you have a percentage increase for people, and, I mean, the amount of money that goes to somebody that's making fifty thousand dollars versus the amount of money that's making. A hundred thousand dollars, then it's, it, whoops, it stretches things out.
And we hope that the department heads look at that, too, when they're evaluating positions, I, we leave it up to them to choose.
Over a long period of time, it gets you out of balance.
Exactly.
And merit, but I agree with the principle of merit, but I disagree with the practice of. Funding unfilled positions with merit for the department to use.
Well, you have to have a way to calculate what each department would get for merit, and that's, I mean, that's a fairly simple. Way to do it is to take a look at, you know, what their total salary is, and calculate whatever a percentage would be. I, I don't know, you may be able to think of a better way to come up with a calculation, I, to me, that was a.
I think you could calculate it on the total payroll for the funded positions for that year, and as a percentage of that figure, it's an accounting practice.
It is, but we have some departments that are smaller than others.
Right, and that's where the issue, that's where the issue has a big impact. You know, if you're a larger department like the SO, or if you're, or probably the second largest in number of employees is Roden Bridge.
Now, keep in mind that the sheriff's office, since majority of the, in the jail, since their own salary ranges, I do not use their full salaries. I use the ones that are not in the salary ranges to calculate the merit, I do not use their, their full budget.
And they would not be included in any.
The ones that are in our ranges will not be included in the merit, so, correct.
Well, like I said, I've said what I think and.
Now, if there was an easier way for our system to pull, you know, this position's expense this amount each year, it would be easier for us, we could take that route. But it wouldn't be doable for this year.
Well, I mean, and I haven't had this conversation before, but a thought that comes to my mind is, is, I wonder how many of those, hang on, where was it? Got too much paper here, imagine that.
I know.
The figures on the vacancies, which I think is great, because the calculations I did on our vacant positions, as we've grown, we've gone down, we've gone from sixteen percent. Back in twenty three, there you go, it was turned over, thank you. In twenty, you know, we were sixteen point six percent back in twenty two, total county wise were ten point four percent. How many of those positions have been. Unfilled for a year or more? Okay, and I guess the, the question is, is, and here's my logic, is, is. I don't hear a public concern being expressed by citizens that were not in service, meeting the needs. That they have of Brazos County's government. And if that's the case, and we've got a ten percent. Unfilled positions rate that's gone down, granted, it's gone down from sixteen point six to ten point four, that's good, but if we got that, I, I mean, I don't hear in the community, maybe you do, that people are saying, well, you know, Brazos County's. Doesn't have the people to meet the needs that I have, and, well, and it could be that, I mean, I know that, for instance, in the jail. There may be positions that have not been filled, but there's somebody filling in those positions with overtime. Right. So it's not like we're losing service. But of the hundred and five positions, that is thirty three.
That's what?
Of the hundred and five positions, the total vacancies that we just got handed here from the sheriff's office is thirty three of those one oh five. So that means that you have, what, sixty, almost seventy unfilled positions outside of the sheriff's office, right? So, so I guess my question is, is, we collect money from people to fully fund those vacancies, and I'm, like I said, I'm glad that we're down from sixteen point six to ten point four. But that, this explains why we have our general fund. Excess of revenues over expenditures, and we're getting better at it. But I mean, I, I guess my question is, is, I'd like to know how many of those positions have been unfilled for a year or more? Because I think that what we try, what my suggestion would be is, is, if you've got an unfilled position that we're asking people to fund. That there's nobody there, and that's been there for longer than a year, or it's been there for a year. Why don't we move those positions budget wise to where they can be filled, but why don't we move those under contingency? Why don't we move those under the commissioner's court, like the unfilled positions we have in HR? And like the unfilled positions we have under the judge, and then not.
Give you an example, one that, that I'm aware of.
Go ahead, please.
All right. IT had a webmaster position that had been open for probably two years, if not three. And they weren't able to find anybody, and now they've got somebody hired on, but it wasn't because they weren't seeking somebody, they were, they were trying to get somebody hired on. And our, and in my opinion, our webpage had, was. In the, it was in the ancient age, you know, and I think we're, as, as we move forward in the future with this new.
I'll agree, I've, I've heard concerns expressed by the public about that.
So I'm just telling you one example of, of, that I know and I'm aware of, I have no idea what the rest of them may be. But there are examples certainly out there that, that we, maybe we don't have enough money. there that, that we, maybe we don't have enough money budgeted to attract somebody into the position. I don't know what all the, the reasons are that they're not filled, but there could be other reasons than they're just don't need them, and so they're not gonna fill them. I mean, I think if they didn't think they needed them, we'd be taking them back.
Yeah, well, I mean, but each year, we collect tax revenue and other revenues to fund those in the budget, because we wanna have a balanced budget, right?
Yeah, but, so you're, you're saying we shouldn't fund them, but then what if this, like it did with this round, we ended up hiring in somebody, uh, had to pay a little more than what was there, but we hired in somebody, and so if it's not funded, what do you do? If you slash the budget, and those 70, let's say we'd say, okay, well, those 70 positions, we're not gonna fund them. Well, then what do you do when they, when they actually?
Well, I didn't say that. How many of those 70 positions, uh, that are, there's 105 positions open, 33 of those are sheriff's office, so that leaves 72 that are unfilled positions outside of the sheriff's office, if I'm, you know, looking at the math on this and looking at that number right. So, we still collect for, we collect revenue, because we wanna balance budget, but if we don't fill those positions in a period of time, maybe the fact that it takes us longer than a year to get a position filled brings up to mind that HR and that department head or whoever comes to us and says, hey, we can't fill this position, and then we need to go talk about.
Well, then we're actually doing a salary study to try to determine where we're at, where we are on that. I think you're aware of that, that there's a salary study being done, so.
I, I, I actually saw the line item in the budget, so yes.
Okay, good. Glad you did.
So my suggestion would be, is, is, uh, if we've got positions, what's the, what's the review process? If we've got a position that's been open for longer than a year, what's, what's the process for us to say, hey, do we need this position? And if we do need this position, what do we need to do to adjust whatever it is to make that position one that we can fill if we need it?
Sometimes the position is not filled when they try to hire someone, our salary is not high enough to attract them.
Understand that, understand that.
And so what if we, instead of merit, increase the COLA? What would, what would it cost to increase the COLA by a half percent?
Well, I think you, I, I think you.
403,000.
Well, I don't think you, I don't think you shotgun the thing, I think you use a rifle. I think you look at those positions and say, what do we need? We looked at the largest openings position that we had with the sheriff's office, and we made adjustments last year, making some more salary adjustments this year, put them on a, uh, much more autonomous form of how they use the funds that they get, and they're, they appreciate that, and it's improved things, obviously, if you take a look at, uh, whatever, uh, if you look at this graph here.
Excuse me.
If, if we look at this graph.
I ask Nina a question.
It'd be an estimate of 403,000, and this, um, for just a 0.5% cost. 403,000. And that, that's an estimate. Once this, once upon the system, it is wonderful calculations, and it might be a little bit above, but this is a good estimate.
And frankly, I think in the HR, Jennifer, when y'all were looking at salaries, just in general, it looks like we are probably gonna be low. I mean, that's what we would anticipate. We're gonna be low when we get our salary survey back. So, as you suggested, maybe the thing we do is raise that COLA up, uh, and then hopefully we won't be as far behind when that salary survey comes back, and it won't require as much of an increase at that point, so.
I mean, it, it's, it's one way to offset it. Merit's a great way to, you know, make sure the employee is awarded in a certain sense, uh, but once we go into the compensation study, we need to have positions, you know, stagnant in order for this study to take place. Uh, we do have some positions that are maxed out, they're not able to receive merit because they're at the highest of the, the step chart, and so, you know, those positions no longer are able to receive it, and that's why we're starting to look at different ways for merit to happen.
But if we gave a COLA, they would be able to receive that.
Um, I would pick one or the other, depending on the increase to the budget. Um, if you wanna give another 5% COLA, everybody gets the cost of living across the board, and it helps everybody out. The merit helps specific person out, you know, to that position, and so I would, that's why I brought it back to the court, because I want, I would, I, I'm sure both of them would be great, and everybody will want both of them, but looking at how much we're gonna have to look at the bottom budget, I'm not sure both of them will be doable, and so if you wanna do 0.5% cost of living or another 1% cost of living.
Without the merit.
Or leave it at.
The 5%, without the merit.
I, I, I think that's a shotgun approach, and we need to take a rifle, because.
Well, that's your opinion.
Why, why, yes, it is, and I think I have the right to express it, and here's the reason.
I think you have.
The reason is that we, there are areas that we don't need to increase compensation in order to get people to fill those positions. There are positions where that's the case, but we have no formal process of being able to review who those are. Obviously, the glaring thing was, was that, uh, the detention officers that we had, but I mean, if you take a look at the data that we received here, uh, from Jennifer, something happened in October of 2023, and our vacancies for detention officers, which were the big issue, went from 28 to 15, and they've been average of 15 ever since then.
I think that's when the sheriff's office did that, hired that consultant.
I would tell you, I think that it was because budget made some changes about the way that, that the salaries.
The salary ranges.
Would be addressed at detention and sheriff's office. And then, and the reason you did it was because of, they weren't able to fill and keep, um, employees.
Correct.
And so it, that's what, that's what we hoped, that was the intent.
And it has helped.
And that is, it looks like it's successful.
Yeah, I understand that. My question is, is, okay, what about the other 72?
Well, if you can give me some examples of why, uh.
I think a good indicator is a fact, is if you've got a position that hasn't been filled in one year, it ought to go into a process of reviewing why we haven't filled that position.
And I think it should be left to commissioner's court to remove that position, not up to budget office, as court has granted those positions to those departments, and I think the court should.
We're still gonna fund them.
Well, if you wanted to move them. And so one way for us to look at the budget, we need to make sure we're budgeting according to the function as well, so that means if we're gonna move it to commissioner's court, non-departmental, if those 33 positions from the jail moves out of the jail to commissioner's court, it looks like we're giving commissioner's court 33 additional positions. It will not reflect that in the budget. We have an explanation, but it looks like government, local government is increasing, not law enforcement, not judicial, and not transport. And so we wanna make sure that we account for those aspects and, and, and certain types of functions. Um, there are suggestions, but regarding positions that have been vacant for more than a year, I think that court should be, we should supply, give you a list, and I think y'all should be the decision maker, that position should be moved to another department or delete it from that department.
Or we need to have conversations about, okay, is this pos-, if, if we've gone for a year and this position has not been filled.
Then someone's doing the work, right? Someone else is doing the work.
Then somebody's doing the work somewhere, and are we overstressing the people who, uh, who are doing that work in addition to not having this person? Uh, and, and there, I, I think it would be good practice to have a review of any position that's been open for longer than a year to where it comes up for review and in process. How you do the accounting on it, I don't wor-, I'm not worried about. We gotta be in compliance relative to whatever the laws are for general accounting standard, uh, practices, but at the same time, uh, you know, this is 10.4% of our funded payroll that isn't getting, that we are collecting money for, but that we're not paying.
Correct.
So you're, you're looking for some direction about?
Yes, because I proposed budget on Tuesday, and we also have to propose a tax rate, and so, and we still need to have the department heads, elected officials speak as well, and, uh, there's just a few more things that we need to run through. Uh, but yes, so do you need direction? Do y'all choose merit? That way I can have it in the proposed budget next Tuesday. Uh, that way it's, we have a, a final amount for the expenditures. Or do you wanna do another 0.5% cost of living across the board? Um, I need some sort of.
Yeah, I would suggest the half percent additional, and no merit.
Bringing it up to 5%.
Yeah, bring it up to 5.
I, I disagree with throwing money at everything. I think we ought to target the specific positions the same way we did with.
I think you made your position clear. So, uh, I'm not sure, we know, we know where one commissioner stands. I'm, I'm okay with 5%.
I know, we can't not take a vote.
I know, we're not voting on it.
Okay, I'll, I will take what I've heard today and move forward with trying to propose the budget.
Just so I can understand, is that cost of living, or is that merit?
Cost of living.
She made it clear it was, it was COLA.
I don't think it's doable to do both.
So, so no merit?
No.
No merit.
Yeah, I, I go back to our figures that we got as far as what the actual cost of living was, and we're.
The CPI showed four point, it was between 4.3 and 4.8, so I chose 4.5, and so we're still close to the CPI, either if you choose 4.5 or 5. I wouldn't suggest any higher, just because that's what the data shows, and that's what I can support, put into the proposed budget.
Uh, the university gave 5.
Okay. So I do wanna show, um, the reclassifications that are not in the budget. This was a 12, 1%. I'm gonna go through them real fast, so that way we can allow the department heads, elected officials to speak. There's a salary adjustment, um, for the administrative specialist, but the, um, the request was withdrawn. Administrative assistant to district attorney, it was a title change and salary adjustment. The senior bookkeeper, um, district clerk, salary adjustment. Um, majority of these are salary adjustments. Um, clerk one, district clerk, clerk one, district clerk, bailiff at 85th district clerk. He withdrew his request after reviewing some of the other bailiffs, um, and the other district courts, as well as, um, CCL courts, um, to help support another bailiff to receive a salary increase, but we're still trying to figure out one way for us to, um, put all the bailiffs on one type of pay range, but it's gonna take a little bit. Clerk coordinator, um, at the juvenile referee. Elected official for JP, um, one. Clerk one underneath the JP's office, precinct one. Clerk coordinator, precinct one. Clerk three, precinct one. Clerk two, precinct one. Lieutenants at the sheriff's office, um, asked for a, a range adjustment. The lieutenants at the jail administration, uh, administration asked for a range adjustment. The correctional health profession, uh, professionals at the jail, was a range adjustment. Elected officials for constable one. The chief deputy for constable one. The three deputies in constable one. The chief deputy in constable two. The six deputies in constable two. The chief deputy in constable three. Three deputies in constable three. Elected official, constable four. That's wrong, I need to put that as a four. These are fours. Um, I'll change it in a bit. Uh, chief deputy in constable four, and then deputies, six deputies in constable four. Administrative secretary in the Brazos Center wanted a title change. We are doing this salary survey and all that, so we're gonna hold off on that. Civil engineer, um, that request was withdrawn. This total, um, increases that are not in the total, but in the proposed budget is 1 million. Total new positions are priority two, not in the proposed budget, is two transition training positions that are non-departmental. This, um, recruiting specialist, they requested two, but we're proposing one. Control booth operator. Uh, chief juvenile, public defender, and these were, um, requested in the grant, but I wanna, until we get the yes or no on the grant, um, they were still requested. Juvenile public defender, paralegal investigator and caseworker for the public defender. Those are total nine positions. Priority three was assistant motor vehicle supervisor and assistant property tax supervisor. This is where we combined one position, um, and, under the tax office, and just called it assistant supervisor, where they can help out in both areas. Investigative assistant for the district attorney. Administrative secretary for family associate court. Deputy sheriff's office administration. Deputy constable precinct four. Juvenile probation officer, one, and the juvenile administration. And this is the remainder of the grant for public defender. They wanted to put it, uh, public defender, mental health, um, additional public defender attorneys, paralegal investigator and caseworker. Until a receiver went on the grant, I can't put him in the budget, 'cause in the grant, it'd be so planting. And so his priority this next year, if the grant does not come through, was to make sure he has a receptionist, and that's where the receptionist was plugged in the, uh, public defender side. Okay, that was a total of 14 additional positions. Total, um, positions that are not in the proposed budget is 2.6 million. At this time, I do like to give the opportunity for public, I mean, for the public, excuse me, for the elected officials and department heads to speak. I wanna sit here and, um, grab the list that they signed in, and Judge, do you mind calling them up, so they can have their chance to speak?
Do.
Do we want to take a five-minute break?
Oh, we can, yes.
Let's do that, just before we get started. Let's do that, just before we get started. Let's start back up. Where is Nina in here?
Oh.
There you are. You want me to start calling?
Sure. I wanted to run away, but they held me at the door. And the doors are blocked. So yes, go ahead and please call the first person who signed in, and we'll go from there.
All right. Kevin Stewart.
Good afternoon, Judge, Commissioners. Thank you all very much for taking all the time and allowing us to speak. I just have a brief, kind of a brief statement, and then I'll welcome any questions anybody may have. But publicly, I wanted to thank Abby Bell and Jerry and Garrett House. Whenever we're talking about employee retention and keeping good folks, that's, they're great examples of that. And the whole budget process and the support from the commissioners' court, I know that not everybody agrees on everything, but it's, it's been really great. And this is a great county, and there's a reason for that. So thank you all. I just want to, some of this, I'm going to be preaching to the choir a little bit. Like I said, we already feel very supportive, and we know we're asking for a lot of things, but I want to put it in perspective for some people who may not know. And, you know, the first thing I'd like to lead off with is the Brazos County Detention Center is the gateway to the county's criminal justice system. And so, one way or the other, whether it's within the county or outside entities, everybody's a stakeholder and is affected some, in some way by what we do or how we do it. And so we take that job very seriously. And, and it's not just affecting Kevin back in the office, it affects all of our staff and our community and everybody here. And so one of our responsibilities is to ensure that people are housed securely, humanely, and in compliance with legal standards. And, you know, I want to speak in support of not only the new positions, but all of our budget requests. They're not merely a want, but a necessity driven by recent developments and future projections. And just a little history brief, our detention center is currently staffed for about 672 inmates. And that was, you know, pre-2010. And the projections at that time that were done based on population, we thought our, that the inmate population would reach 800 by 2020. And we're really fortunate that that didn't happen, but we're kind of there now. And, and so the request that we're asking, just mathematically reflects that, strictly based on the math. And, you know, we don't know what that surge is, but that sudden increase in population has put an unprecedented strain on our staff, and they're now stretched beyond their limits. And I wanted to make a distinction, I know there was some discussion about it earlier, but a real distinction between the, us requesting new positions and vacancies, because they're not, they are related in a sense, but they're two separate things to consider. One shouldn't be considered over the other. And I know that's not the case, but again, just putting that out there. One of the things that everybody should be aware of is we're not alone. The whole nation's facing staffing challenges. Specifically, detention centers across the nation are grappling with similar shortages. And it's driven by a combination of factors, including increased job demands, shrinking pool of qualified candidates, and just like in our area, a heightened competition for those candidates. Approving this budget is a clear demonstration of our commitment to running a safe and secure facility. And it shows that we're taking proactive steps to address staffing challenges head-on rather than waiting for problems to arise. By investing in our workforce, we're ensuring that our detention center remains a place where both staff and inmates are safe and where operations run smoothly and professionally. You know, we're not merely filling gaps. We're planning ahead to ensure that our facility is fully equipped to handle the growing demands placed on it. This approach highlights our commitment to effective management and our dedication to making well-informed, forward-looking decisions. And we understand, again, that there may be questions about our existing vacancies. However, our ongoing efforts to fill these positions through enhanced recruiting strategies, improved job marketing, professional development, show that we're focused on building a strong, capable workforce. The request for additional positions is part of a broader strategy to ensure that we have staffing levels necessary to operate effectively and safely. And just to tie it in a little bit with retention, one of the, one of the most significant challenges in today's workforce is retaining quality staff. Overworked and overstressed employees are more likely to leave, leading to higher turnover and increased recruitment costs. By approving the budget, we can reduce the burden to our current staff, making their work environment more manageable and their jobs more sustainable. This is crucial in retaining the experienced, dedicated professionals who are the backbone of our facility. We're also committed to increasing training, professionalism, and supervision within our organization. These new positions allow, allow us to invest more in our employees' development and help us with our strategy of creating clear career paths and opportunities for advancement. This not only improves the quality of service we provide, but also makes our facility more, a more attractive place to work, further aiding in recruitment and retention. And while adding these positions requires an upfront investment, it's a fiscally responsible decision that'll save the county money in the long run. And just one, one of the requests that we have in there that I wanted to speak to that's not included is for our medical staff or LVN position. And just in simple terms, LVNs, the current rates that we're paying them, the maximum rate is what LVNs in the private sector are starting at. So their starting pay is what the maximum that we pay, and that's why we have that, we're asking for that. And so what that means is you have an LVN qualified person that has a decision to make. Are they going to go work in a, a nice doctor's office or go work in a jail with inmates for less money? And, you know, some of those things, money is not everything, but we got to get them, the reason we're requesting that is because we have to get them in the door first, at least attracted to come here. And so I'd ask for consideration on that, on that request. And then, just to wrap it up, really, I just, I feel like we have a duty, and this demonstrates, this budget and our request, as always, demonstrates this, that we have a duty to the community to make decisions that not only address the current needs, but also anticipate and mitigate future challenges. And by approving the positions, you're demonstrating proactive leadership, ensuring that our detention centers prepare to handle the future population increases and operational demands. And so again, I know some of that is kind of, we're all in agreement on those, on those terms, but we really do feel supportive. And my hope is just from this message that we continue on that path and look towards the future, you know, that's been stated several times before. So, thank you.
Chief.
Yes, sir.
So the item, so I can just identify that you expressed the concern about, about LVNs, that's the correctional health professional's range adjustment that was for 1 through 14?
Yes, sir.
The $309,000.
That's correct.
Okay. And there, there are 14 positions, you say, there? Is that, is that the ones of 14?
Yeah, there's a, and some, you know, I need to, I'd have to verify the amount on that because we have two different levels of certification. And so I think that's what the total cost is to max out all of them. Did I say that right, Nina?
Yes.
Yeah.
We put the medical division on ranges as well. And so that is to increase what they're asking to max amount. It was not included in the proposed budget, just basing it off of sour, salary compensations and salary data that HR had provided, as well as the juvenile LVN, what they're being compensated. And so if we do them, I think we need to look at the other medical positions as well.
Okay, even though they're not detention-oriented or jail, I mean, because one of the distinctions that I think you made was.
Correct.
It's different if you're hiring somebody to be a licensed vocational nurse.
But in the job description, does it state that?
Then a detention facility versus outside of a detention facility. That's, I think that's where you were saying that the discrepancy was that was making it difficult?
Yeah, well, I'm just trying to, to paint a picture for everyone that if we have, if we have these LVNs out there that are looking for a job, and they see the jail that the maximum we could pay is what they get paid day one in a nice doctor's office.
Got you.
And, you know, they're working in a little bit different environment with some difficult people, but it's also critical.
Okay. And what you're saying, though, is, is that that would also trigger a need to reassess all of the comparable health position?
I think currently, I think they were, they could either hire EMS, they could be certified EMS, they were just not LVN, they could be RN. And so LVN, of course, is the highest. And looking at some of the positions in other departments that are LVNs, they're, they would be making more than them.
Okay, how much?
I couldn't tell you.
How many, how many positions?
We have one that's going to be in juvenile and one that is under Health and Life, the clinic, that we would need to review. But looking, if you want to go off of data, the salary compensations that HR had provided during this discussion was not at what was requested.
It was what? I'm sorry.
Was not, it was a little lower than what was requested. And so it's hard for me to go off of once versus what I can.